We have a quorum and proceed with recognitions first. Can I turn this over, I assume, to Sandy?
Yep, I will start this evening, thank you. And we're going to ask Katie Murphy, high school social studies teacher, to come up to the microphone. We are very proud of Katie. She was accepted to be a 2017 AGS Geography Teacher Fellow, and she recently attended the institute, I'm going to call it, and she's here this evening to share some of the exciting information and experience with us. Thank you, Katie. Congratulations.
Thank you, Sandy. Good evening. My name is Catherine Murphy, and I teach AP Human Geography as well as the Holocaust at Hudson High School. I was asked to speak in regards to being chosen as an AP Human Geography Teacher Fellow by the American Geographical Society. The goal of AGS is to advance and promote geography in business, government, science, and education. Beginning last year, AGS began asking AP Human Geography teachers to apply to become AP Teacher Fellows for the opportunity to attend their annual symposium at Columbia University in New York. Their goal was to bring together leaders in business, government, science, and education that might not otherwise have the opportunity to interact and provide opportunities for discussion, debate, and collaboration to further the understanding of how geography is going to shape the future of our world. This year's symposium topic was the future of mobility, which correlates to multiple units of study in our AP curriculum. I decided to apply after hearing about it at the end of last school year and also as a reader at the AP reading in June. In July, I was informed that I was chosen to be an AP Fellow. At the conference, I was able to speak with and learn from other AP Human Geography teachers across the country, as well as leaders in both the private and public sectors that use geography and geospatial tools in their careers. It was interesting and informative to hear from people such as Lee Schwartz, the geographer for the U.S. State Department, John Hanke, and Brian McLendon, the creators of Keyhole Incorporated, a digital mapping software development company that developed the underpinnings for Google Earth, Google Maps, and Google Street View, and Todd Gretz, Director of Technology Services for BNSF, which, with cooperation of the FAA, uses geospatial technologies to monitor one of the largest transportation networks that connects consumers to the global marketplace. The conference included hands-on activities to incorporate into our classrooms as well. Students can use OpenStreetMap, an online mapping tool, by contributing to and maintaining data within their own communities. This data can then be used by other community members, as well as government agencies when and if events such as natural disasters take place. I would like to thank the district for allowing me the time out of my classroom to attend the AGS Symposium. Overall, this opportunity allowed me to grow professionally and gain invaluable knowledge that can provide my students with extended learning opportunities and activities within my classroom, and also help students to make connections to how they may use geography and geospatial technologies in their future majors and careers. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yeah, board member comments?
So, first of all, congrats.
Thank you.
That's pretty cool. So, you got to listen to some pretty interesting minds. What was maybe the most intriguing comment or thing that you learned while you were there?
Probably the most intriguing was just the connection that everything that people do involves geography in some way, specifically things like GIS and GPS, that every one of these people talk specifically about that. Also, the connection to the social studies and geography, and how important that aspect is in any career that they were part of.
Cool. Congrats.
Thank you.
Yes, congratulations. Any other comments? I was just going to say thank you for your work, and I was curious, it says that you were among 50 of the best teachers in the country to join them for the symposium. Were there other Wisconsin teachers, or were you the only one from Wisconsin?
There was one other Wisconsin teacher, yes. So, it was by application process, and 50 teachers, AP teachers specifically in the U.S., were chosen.
All right, excellent. Well, thank you for applying, and I like that initiative from our teachers, and it reflects well on our district. I just see the importance of geography as well, because it permeates so much of social studies and everything else, and science. We have, you know, a new generation coming up that is just going to be so reliant on GPS. And I already run into, in my business, I talked with witnesses and clients who are from a community for 25, 30 years. And when I ask them, "So, you proceeded north on the road," and they couldn't tell you which way was north, south, east, or west. So, the fact that, you know, we stress geography, and we've got an advanced placement, and you're trying to elevate the level of education in that area, we appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good, Erin.
Yes, Erin?
So, tonight, we welcome Heidi Schimmann and Brittany Lemonak, teachers at EP Rock, if you guys want to come up to the table. We're proud to announce that our district, specifically EP Rock, has received two awards that highlight our work around health and wellness. First, they were the recipient of the 2017 Let's Move Active Schools National Award. Active Schools is a national movement to increase physical education and physical activity in schools. And the second was an award throughout the Alliance for Healthier Together for their work in developing an action plan and goals for their school, and I know that they're going to describe both, so I'll keep it short. Welcome.
So, last Thursday and Friday, we were able to go to Appleton to accept one of the awards, and a member of the state Student Services Prevention and Wellness team shared the following research that she found while she was working on her dissertation, that this generation of kids might be the first that do not outlive their parents. And I think everyone in the conference room was very shocked by this, because it's very scary. So, our school wellness team and EP Rock staff have been working hard to make sure that we are promoting a healthy lifestyle. Due to our work in this area, we were honored to receive two awards. The first one, so the 2017 Let's Move Active Schools National Award, is a national movement dedicated to ensuring 60 minutes of physical activity per day, and that can include before, during, and after school. We collaborated with our school age care, our physical education teachers, and parents to assist us in making sure that we were meeting the silver one. To earn the award, our school met benchmarks in five areas: so, physical education, physical activity before and after school, staff involvement, and family and community engagement. Our work in these areas includes, but was not limited to, so we created monthly family calendars that we called the Three E's calendar. So, eat healthy, encourage others, which I think that mental health piece is what we learned a lot about at the conference as well, and was talked about a lot, and exercise. So, then, students were challenged to complete 15 of 30 activities on the calendar per month, and if they did, they were given a little shoe that they wore around a necklace. So, this became a huge motivator for students. Well, how many shoes do you have? So, this was for three months, and then the following month is when we will kick off our power-up for the school. We also provided classroom teachers with brain break calendars and other options for movement breaks for students. We rewarded students with a snow playdate with our book buddies, so we just went out in the snow and let them play. We had put, like, colored water in bottles, and they got to color the snow with whatever they had came up with, as well as other outdoor activities. We set classroom walking times. We're very fortunate at Rock to have the track right next door. So, in the spring, we would set up, we would give each classroom a 15-minute walking time, which if they had time, they could go out and take their class to walk. With this award, we received $1,300, which we put towards more active seating in classrooms and enriched our physical education equipment with nine-square in the air, which is kind of like a variation of four-square, so it's like six or seven feet in the air, and you hit a ball back and forth. And the teachers, we were actually the first ones to try it out, and we learned it's more challenging than you would realize. And then, we also purchased pickleball to have outside at recess to help keep kids active. Vision of this team is that all people are and feel healthy, safe, supported, engaged, and challenged. To coincide with this award, we also had the honor to attend, like Brittany said, the Wisconsin School Health Award Ceremony in Appleton this past Thursday. And this was through the Alliance for Healthier Together that Erin mentioned. This award celebrates schools with policies, programs, and the infrastructure to support and promote healthy school programming, parental and community involvement, and staff wellness. As you can see, they both kind of coincide with the same core values. Alliance for a Healthier Generation is where we had the opportunity to enter in our action plan and work towards meeting goals throughout the year. So, it gave us, there was eight modules, and then we just really focused on goals and implementing them. The areas of assessment were school health and safety policies and environment, health education, physical education, nutrition services, health services, counseling, psychological and social services, health promotion for staff, and then family and community involvement. Within each of these modules, there are tasks and goals to work towards. Once our school had met that goal, then we could show documentation that it was complete and move on to the next area. By the end of the year, Alliance for a Healthier Generation then uses this assessment to rate your school's performance on becoming a healthy school. So, once our school met all the criteria in each of the modules, then we were able to apply for a National Healthy Schools Award based off the data that we had provided. Areas that we are continuing to work in on our action plan to move towards a silver award are using healthy foods as a reward and working out a breakfast plan. For example, we just had a whole school activity, and instead of using candy as a reward, we chose all healthy snacks. We had apples, bananas, trail mix, and other options for students to choose from, and they were so thrilled to win that they didn't even think twice about if it was a healthy choice or not. And then, as with breakfast program, we all know that the middle school is currently piloted, and we are hopeful that we may have the opportunity to incorporate this in our school as well to continue our action plan. This was the first year that we completed this program, and we were honored to accept a bronze award for our actions taken to move towards a healthy school. So, we just are so proud of our staff for everything that we've put at them, for implementing all these different brain breaks into their classrooms to keep students moving throughout the day, and also the parent group, because it takes that community piece. We implemented a family fundraiser in May, so in just promoting healthier fundraisers rather than always serving candy at different events. So, this is what we wanted to be much. So, we're, it was kind of neat. So, it was fun to get an award or a letter from Hudson State Superintendent, just saying that we had got that, especially that this was our first year.
So, was that plaque the national award or the state award?
This was the Wisconsin school, the state award.
The state award, all right.
Yeah, and then the national one that Brittany talked about, the Let's Move, we got a huge banner, and we hung it, it's in our gym, so it's, it's a huge banner, it's like a six-foot banner.
Okay, excellent. Any comments from other board members?
Mr. President?
Bruce?
Did some other schools do this too? I thought Holton did something like this, but maybe it's not the same. I think they maybe were incorporating it with, like, the hospital or something like that.
Healthier Together.
Yeah, yeah, was that like a district-wide program?
So, Healthier Together is now what the Let's Move Active School is now called.
Okay.
So, it's all under, when you go into Healthier Together, that's the format that you fill out. It's under Healthier Together, but the award is called Let's Move. So, you have to qualify to earn that award. But they could have created, like, an action plan in it.
Yeah.
I guess they don't know. Well, and the one thing that we learned is a lot of these forms are very similar. It just takes someone sitting down and putting the information in several of them.
Right.
But a lot, I mean, I think all of our schools are doing these things.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, being on the wellness committee, I feel like I always just take things that our wellness, our district wellness is doing.
Yeah.
And then, basically, doing the documentation piece in either Healthier Together, or in this case, it was through the Alliance for Healthier Generation, sorry, that's the wrong. But they were very similar, but it's still documenting in each different form, and they all have different submissions and to complete.
Yeah, it's awesome.
We all do it. Every school I know does all these from our wellness committee. It's just a matter of putting forth that next step. And that's something I've talked about bringing to our wellness committee, if we can call even one member from each group and have us all working and completing this action plan.
Yeah.
During that meeting time, because I think all, many of our schools are doing a lot of these, it's just that next step.
Nice work. Nice to see the passion brought forward for it. That's cool. Thanks.
Other members? Yes?
Yeah, Mr. President. So, as much as you're saying "all it takes is," I just want to really acknowledge the two of you for stepping up. Some of the work that I do is the creating the programs, or a district can pass a policy, but where the real success comes through, I've seen again and again, and when, is when individual staff members at a school really grab something and say, "This is the right thing to do, and we're going to make it happen here at our school." So, thank you, and hearing you guys tell the stories about, "Hey, healthy fundraisers can work, healthy snacks can work," that's the narrative that's going to inspire other schools to try it, because if it comes from somebody developing a curriculum or a policy, they're skeptical. But when it comes from a colleague who's done it successfully, that's when, that's when people are willing to take the leap. So, just thank you to the two of you for all of the energy, above and beyond energy, that you've put into the work at your school. It's really appreciated. Yeah.
Carrie, did you have a comment?
Bruce touched on it.
Bruce touched on it, all right. Well, I just want to say thank you for your work, and I totally echo what Heather just said, it takes somebody to actually follow through on all of this. And what I liked, what I heard there, I pulled out, was the involvement of the parents, because so much of this just can't be done while their kids are in school. It has to be, you know, partnership with parents to be able to do this. And the other is the integration of all aspects of health. It's not just moving around for an hour, but rather, it's the impact of, you know, the emotional and the mental aspects, and how they interplay, and they play off each other, that you improve your mental health, well-being by being physically active. And we just talked about improvements in technology in all the different areas. It is the one area where we're not going to be able to, you know, make people, you know, technology's not going to be able to move for us. It even makes it more hard to be conscientious about. And I just thought of an idea, we could get this one hour if we had a new transportation policy that said all the kids have to walk a half hour to school and a half hour back, they'd get their one hour in, and we'd save gas money at the same time. But, no. Yeah, it's when we, no, thank you for all your work, though. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, just one comment.
Yes, Sue.
I think I've been reading, haven't I, that kinesthetic activity contributes to better learning, and I've been at EP Rock watching children try to not run down the hall, but their little bodies are kind of shimmying, and I like both, well, I'm sure your, your energy and passion has been very infectious and has carried through into the families at home. So, thank you, and congratulations. And I just want to say one more thing about geography, and that is, I taught art history, and I tell you, it came into play, and I think that even at a college level, that's one of the very weak areas that I, that I saw in some of my students was their, you know, comprehension of geography. So, thank you.
Well, maybe we'll be able to do something with Olympics coming up in February that integrates geography and then physically moving around as well, so, yeah. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, do we have any citizen requests to speak about non-agenda items? Seeing non-move to construction update from our superintendent, Dr. Olet.
Thanks, Jamie. So, attached a document to the agenda that our construction management company puts out, Kraus Anderson, kind of talks through a couple of different items. I did add a map there, that was one of the things on page two. People were wondering, okay, when they talk about areas A, B, C, different things like that in the building, what areas are they talking about? And really, the reason the building is broken into these areas is how, it all has to do with how big or how much of the plan they can fit on one normal-sized architectural sheet that's an eighth-inch scale, and so that's the rationale behind these different, these different parts of the building. And so, we also then refer to the different parts of the building as we're, as we're doing remodels and renovations. Couple of things to, you know, to touch on, and then there's quite a few pictures in there if people have questions. But Area F and Area L are the two areas that's the new classroom additions that are coming out in the front of the building. They're moving along quite well. The Bizon Stone, or that stone, the exterior stone facade is going on. We anticipate here in the next couple of weeks that that should be done. They've been roofed, and so they're working on getting those plasticed in as well, so they can continue to work in there. Area G, which is the rotundas, which is like the main office area and the media center area, that steel is set, they're going to be pouring that shortly. The area M and N, this is the big area they're working on right now as far as the structural steel, that would be the existing gym, and also the new gym addition, and then the addition out to the east of the building in N. And so, they did start setting, actually, the roof trusses or the roof bar joists today for the new gym expansion, so that's quite neat to see that going up. They're also going to be, over the course of this week, starting to work down the south side of the gym, setting the steel for the, for the track, the running track that goes along there. The auditorium, which is something that is coming up shortly, is really close to completion. We were going to punch it out last week, but just made a determination that it wasn't quite done enough to have a real effective punch list, and so we're going to try again on Friday of this week. I don't know if you remember me saying, "Yeah, we don't want to try to schedule anything too close," and people kept saying, "Do you think we could get the holiday concert in at this, at the end?" And I think it was a wise choice to go to, to go to St. Pat's for that, for that concert. But it is moving along. We anticipate the construction committee tomorrow morning. We're meet at 8 o'clock, and we actually meet in the building, not in the trailer. It's room F-104. Tim sent out an email with a map. To get to that room, probably your best bet is to park over by Area K or the new temporary main entrance and walk your way through the building that way. You, I don't know, your ID badge should get you into the back parking lot if you want, but you could also park on the backside of the building and come in as well. The, we'll get a tour of the auditorium, so you can kind of see firsthand what's going on. And one of the things we did talk about with this group is potentially moving our board work session to the high school next Monday, so that part of our board work session could involve a tour for all those other board members that aren't part of the construction committee. So, I don't know if anybody has any objections to that, but that's what maybe I'll kind of count on doing, or having arranged for next Monday night.
Do we get to wear hard hats then?
Yeah, bring your hard hats, just in case. Pretty.
I will, I will. Tim, Tim will bring it for me.
It would be pretty uncommon to see workers still there when we're going to be having a board meeting, but just in case, may have to put them on. But we'll give you kind of the nickel tour of the auditorium, and then kind of the outside area as well. But as you can see, things are moving along quite well. We're continuing to push through, about to take occupancy of the temporary classrooms and start to turn over the north side of Area E there, which is science classrooms that haven't been remodeled yet, and also some, some classrooms in Area K, they're going to be starting those as well. And so, we're just, we're kind of moving along, and we would anticipate when the kids come back from winter break, that the band and the choir will have moved into the auditorium as their new space for the next three or four months, and they'll start in Area B redoing the choir room, putting the choir room in there. In Area F, which is where the, the old media center, if you can remember where the old media center was, there was a temporary wood wall along there that's been removed, and we're now are having lunch in the old media center right now. It's, so we've got a lot of logistics moving around as we get through this, because the back half of the cafeteria will be remodeled for choir. So, questions, comments, anything I can answer as it relates to construction update?
How are the temporary classrooms working out of those employed? No?
They are not, we have not occupied them yet. That's been a little bit of a challenging spot for us, getting our company that we're using to get those things finalized. We have run power, data, the fire alarms, intercom systems, phone systems, out to those. We'll probably, the big cost of the temporary classrooms is the setup and the teardown. It's pretty inexpensive, the monthly rental fee, so we may hold on to those things. It's kind of an insurance policy as we get ready to start the, the school year next year, versus the original plan was to potentially have them taken out off the site in, in June.
Well, they really wouldn't need to be air-conditioned in the summer.
They are air-conditioned.
But they are.
They are air-conditioned, but we wouldn't need to run it, obviously, in the summer. Yep. Other questions?
Good update. Efficient.
And these are great photos, all taken, it looks like, says December 11th, so.
These are the most current, yep, most current, up-to-date, so this is, like I said, something that Kraus Anderson's working through, providing these, just different project updates and what's going on in the project, so. Next, right before I start with my next, next report, I will say that I did have the opportunity to attend the holiday concert last night at, that our students put on with our choir department, and it was hosted at St. Patrick's Church. It was an absolute wonderful concert. The kids sounded amazing. The, a big thank you to St. Patrick's Church for accommodating us there, since our auditorium wasn't ready. The space was absolutely amazing. And for some of you, I think, that are going yet tonight, I think you will be, you'll have a great experience. I mean, the site, the, it just, it was really a first-class experience, so. Moving on to Education Foundation, Hudson Grants, you can click on this thing, so the Education Foundation, every year, actually sometimes twice a year, will go through a grant process, their teachers will write grants. We actually had more folks than this that wrote grants, but these are the folks that won on the, on their grant writing. I believe typically the grant cap is $3,000, I think is the most they typically like to go with any one grant. They do also, in past years, they will provide grants also to St. Pat's and to Trinity Academy. I don't believe, however, this year, there are any of those folks, at least they weren't at the ceremony last week. So, just some neat projects. Typically, what happens with these is what they try to focus is on things that we wouldn't typically, that may be pilot-type programs or pilot-type materials, that if we can try some of these things out, then it may be one of those things that the district then move forward and adopt further. And the principals go through and vet these grant options before they get passed on to the, to the Ed Foundation, and then they go through and select. Usually, myself or Dave, David and myself will meet with the Ed Foundation, answer any questions they may have about the grants and things like that, and go through that process, so. But just really great, the Ed Foundation awarded over $24,000 in grants to 11 grant recipients or 11 different programs in our district. So, really, really a great thing, and very thankful to have them in the district supporting our kids and our staff the way they do. Education Foundation, every year, actually, sometimes twice a year, will go through a grant process, their teachers will write grants. We actually had more folks than this that wrote grants, but these are the folks that won on the, on their grant writing. I believe typically, the, the grant cap is $3,000, I think is the most they typically like to go with any one grant. They do also, in past years, they will provide grants also to St. Pat's and to Trinity Academy. I don't believe, however, this year, there are any of those folks, at least they weren't at the ceremony last week. So, just some neat projects, typically what happens with these is, what they try to focus is on things that we wouldn't typically, that may be pilot-type programs, or pilot-type materials, that if we can try some of these things out, then it may be one of those things that the district then move forward and adopt further. And the principals go through and vet these grant options before they get passed on to the, to the Ed Foundation, and then they go through and select. Usually, myself, or Dave, Dave and myself will meet with the Ed Foundation, answer any questions they may have about the grants and things like that, and, and go through that process, so. But just really great, the Ed Foundation awarded over $24,000 in grants to 11 grant recipients, or 11 different programs in our district, so, really, really a great thing, and very thankful to have them in the district supporting our kids and our staff the way they do. So, that, unless people have questions, is the superintendent's report.
Okay. Any questions? I guess there are 11 up on that one, but mine only shows nine, but the, I just noticed that, was there a limit, like two per building, or anything like that?
No, I don't think there's a limit.
In fact, EP Rock, I see, has three, but we don't have any from River Crest, only one from North Hudson, but-
And, and some areas, some buildings have more than others, but on yours, I can see, if you just scroll down, you'll be able to see the other, the other two grants on your screen.
Oh, that's why they, alright. The arrow wasn't working before, alright, thank you. Any other questions? Alright, moving on to topics for action, entertain a motion for consent agenda.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. President, I would move approval of the consent items, and that the Chief Financial and Operations Officer be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $2,363,195.63.
Second.
Motion by Heather, second. By Bruce, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Moving on to Policy Series 800, first reading, this is for the part two.
So, you guys have already had this, I'll turn it over to Andrea, but you've already gone through this through your work session, so, unless you would have any questions, administration's recommendation would be to approve the first reading of the second part of the 800 series.
So, moved?
Second.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded, sounds like nobody has any questions, this is the same material that we, that Andrea took us through at a work session. Some of these are pro forma, some are changes to our current policy, but all of it being consistent with what WASBIE recommends.
WASBIE and/or our attorney-
Okay.
-had some tweaks to different portions of it, to make sure that it's consistent with our practices.
Alright. Okay, having said that, all those in favor of the first reading, to approve the first reading of the 800 series, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Eyes have it, motion passes. Moving on to the first reading for the 500 series.
Same explanation we gave you before, we would recommend that you approve the first reading of part one of the 500 series.
I move that we accept the first reading of the 500 series. Second.
Alright, we have a motion, we have a second, and just so we're clear, the 800 series, which we did one part already, has to do with?
Community relations.
And this 500 series has to do with personnel.
Personnel, yes, and so, there were, so the 800 series will now be complete after the second reading, 500 will have several parts to it, so it's a longer series.
So, we're going to be even longer than two parts for this?
Many more parts, yes.
Yeah. And again, we've got a rule here, that's part of the first reading, and some various policies that you took us through, particularly the anti-harassment, which happens to be quite topical in the national spotlight, anyway.
And I think it's the, as I explained at the work session, I think it positions us very nicely to be on top of this, so that we now have different, and laid-out transparent approaches to discrimination, illegal harassment, as well as workplace bullying. So, I'm eager to roll it out to the staff in January.
And then, when this gets rolled out, eventually it'll be incorporated in the handbook for next year?
Yep, we'll have it embedded within there, we have some references to our old language currently, but we'll have the new language, and then again, we'll have multiple opportunities at the different buildings to make sure staff are very aware of the modifications.
Mr. President?
Bruce.
Can you, can you talk a little bit about the execution and training, and ongoing training, because it's, you know, for our organization of 40,000 employees, it's, it is an annual event, and, you know, we're capturing it, it's an online, you know, training session that we're going through, how are we going to ensure that our employees have all gone through this training, that they're, you know, gone then, in each subsequent year, to continue to go back and educate themselves?
We are working right now, actually, on contracting with Thompson Reuters, who were finalizing the quotes there. Our plan is to roll out that training, it's an online platform as well, roll out that training in conjunction with these revised policies. I would say, prior to this initiative, there hasn't been as much focus in this area, and this is an area that I think certainly Cabinet, and myself in particular, feel strongly, we need to do a better job of doing this communication, and I think this new, between the combination of the policy modifications, as well as the online platforms, where there's one for supervisors, there's one for employees, and then our availability at the buildings, too, I think all those things together are going to put us in a much better position to ensure compliance and ensure familiarity with the law amongst our staff.
Yeah, I mean, it really sets the position for zero tolerance of going against any of these policies, and making sure that we're acting as we should be, so. Very good, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? All those in favor of approving the 500 series first reading, and first part first reading, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes, and this will be up for second reading at our January meeting, as will the first part of, or the second part of the 800 series. Alright, now moving on to new course proposals. This, too, was discussed at length at our work session-
In November.
-three weeks ago, two weeks ago, whatever it was.
Correct. So, as you're aware, then, the high school has submitted two new course proposals for the 2018-19 school year, the first is Raider Works, a course proposal from the Engineering and Technology Department. It is a school-based enterprise, and it's a capstone learning opportunity for students who have taken two or more construction or manufacturing courses, or who have demonstrated a high skill in these and/or business-related fields. Initially, the course will focus on construction and manufacturing projects done in district and for local businesses. Students will have the opportunity to earn OSHA-10 certification, as well as customer service training. The name concerns that some of you raised at the work session were shared with the department. They are certainly open to considering other course titles, they have not exactly generated, at this point, anything different than Raider Works, but they are open to suggestions. As you may recall, the department conducted site visits to Cardinal Manufacturing in Oliva Strum, and Tiger Manufacturing in Webster, but they felt they liked the capturing of the mascot in the name, but felt the word manufacturing was too limiting. Then we have AP Seminar, this is right out of the AP College Board offerings, it's a new offering, this is the first in a two-part sequence of the AP Capstone Program. Students in AP Seminar will learn to synthesize information from multiple sources, develop their own perspectives in written essays, and design and deliver oral and visual presentations. AP Seminar will be offered to 11th and 12th graders as another pathway in the English Department. So, for example, in 11th grade, students will have the option to take AP Seminar, AP Lang, and Composition, or American Literature. And the goal is to prepare more students for post-secondary by providing another option for students to access a college-level course. And then a reminder that, as in the past, for staffing, training, and supplies, that will all be part of the budget process, that will be coming yet this spring. It's anticipated that any staffing needed for these courses, though, will be a reallocation of current staffing. Thank you.
You're, you're saying it's anticipated it'll be reallocation, but there's a potential new, and so, just distinguish the difference there.
If students are going to have a choice of the three language classes, they already have to have a language course, so it should just sort of work its way through, that will just move sections around versus having to add new staffing.
Okay. But this potential new estimate for, I'm looking at Raider Works, is $2,500 for equipment supplies, and it says professional learning, customer service training.
Right. That's for the two teachers to receive training, correct?
Yep. Okay, any other questions then?
Yeah, I just have a couple of comments. First of all, I'm the one that brought up the title, but I did a little poking around, is this a trend, that's all I want to know, is this a new trend to just kind of use a mascot and then a noun? I did, I did find, at New Richmond, they have Tiger, their mascot, Tiger-
Quest.
Quest, yeah, Tiger Quest. So, I did a little homework, but I don't know if this is a new trend in naming courses, you know? Just curious.
I'm not, it is a new trend for this kind of business, this kind of school-based enterprise, to kind of take that on and kind of be able to take your logo then and put it into the product, and on your customer service forms, and so on.
Okay, I didn't know that's, how that was connected, but I think these are two stunning courses, I, I, my visual on this is, as we get, you know, closer to our senior year, if you think of it like a sandwich, it isn't like, you know, the thick sections of whatever is in the middle of the sandwich, it starts getting to be these really thin things, like, you know, a lettuce, or a, and, no onion, or, you know, a spread or something, and they're very critical to their education, but, and I say that because what it does is that, that these courses connect them with what happens after they graduate, and there, so many of our students are almost really done with high school, halfway through, whatever, you know, their senior year, and, or even maybe at the end of their junior year, so they need classes like this, and, and of course, I like the OSHA connection, too, in there.
Yes, yes, they should be prepared, then, to go on into either a program or into the work field, correct?
Mr. President?
Yes, Carrie.
Sue, so many comments came to mind there, but I personally do like that name, I don't know if it kind of just grew on me, but it kind of caught my attention even the last time, so thank you.
Okay, thanks. That's what's hard.
Mr. President?
Yes, Bruce.
So, I, I'm supportive of these, and I know I said this, I probably say it each year, but I'm going to say it again, because I'm, I'm a, I'm a superfan of some form of leadership class, I think it really should be considered, I don't know what is out there. But I said this before, the, the single most important class that I had in my entire collegiate career was a leadership course, and I just so happened to have it my senior year, and I wish I would have taken it my freshman year, it would have just prepared me in a very different way. I think done appropriately, you capture many of the soft skills that are required for people to be productive in society, and to understand and learn how to work in different environments. I think there's a lot of different ways to go at it, but I would love to see something along those lines in the future be considered for our, our students, but I'm very supportive of these here. And the names, you can, you can roll with whatever you want to roll with there, I'm sure the kids are good with it, and they'll understand.
Well, any other comments? Yeah, I'm, I am as well supportive, I like the practical application of the Raider Works, but also, the advanced placement taking our written and oral communications to another level is really important, and making sure our students are ready, whether it's going to be for work, or for its, you know, advanced learning in college, or whatever, these are skills that are important, and, you know, the practical aspects of running a business can't be emphasized enough, they can't be, always be learned just by reading a textbook, so.
Ready for a motion?
Yes.
Okay, I move that we approve the two new course proposals, Raiders Works and Advanced Placement, and I can't read the fine print.
Second.
Thank you. Seminar.
Motion by Sue, second by Bruce, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Last on our action agenda is overnight travel.
We present to you this evening a list of the winter and spring overnight travel, which is anticipated for both athletics and student activities for the remainder of the 2017-18 school year. Teaching and learning worked with the Athletic and Activities Department to generate the list. Our process, as you recall, is to seek board approval for any overnight travel outside a 100-mile radius of Hudson. So, we present to you tonight the overnight travel, you can see, the first one, we're short a few days, but the rest are for the remainder of the school year.
I presume the ones that have already occurred were uneventful, so-
Yeah, correct.
Any questions of board members? I see that there's two here that, I mean, well, there's two in Minnesota, but those are probably closer than some of these ones in Wisconsin. The two that are out of our region of this country are Atlanta, Georgia, which would be Nationals for DECA, and then Knoxville, Tennessee, for Destination Imagination, and-
Correct.
-we send students to Nationals there all the time, so, I'm recognizing that we have sent students to these in the past, that not much of this is new.
No.
Although I see maybe some more events for FFA, which we hadn't seen in the past, but that organization's getting much more involved under the new leadership it has, so.
Correct.
Any other questions, otherwise I entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. President?
Yes, Carrie.
Do, do we not have to have the potential for athletic playoffs listed?
Generally, they're not overnight, though, I don't think. These are more overnight-related.
Absolutely, we, we do have it on some of them, which, which ones in particular are you looking at?
I guess I didn't see basketball for girls or boys listed, but maybe I, I'm missing it.
Well, we've got as far as sectionals, it looks like.
Not for basketball.
Non-conference.
Well, let's be a little bit more optimistic.
Good eyes, Carrie.
We will, we'll talk to our AD and get that on there, yeah, because we do have state section, and sectionals for the other sports.
Mr. President, quick question, can you remind me, so this is just the routine travel, and things like the choir trip to Ireland come to us in a different format, is that correct? Right, correct. The international travel comes in a different format and seeks your approval.
This is good information for the board to have, so you know when we're sending kids out of state, or overnight, or any situations that, you know, when things come up, you have kind of an idea where we're sending folks. And that was another thing that Heather wasn't, you weren't on the board, when we set policy about chaperones, and student-to-supervisor ratios, and there's a policy and a practice guide that goes with that, or procedure, right, that's what we call it, procedure.
Okay.
But it definitely was precipitated by international events, because we saw that maybe that was one thing that we wanted to have specific board approval. I know our choir trip is like every other year, right?
Correct.
And that has gotten-
So then, behind the scenes, there are checklists for them to follow as far as chaperones, checking, background checks, medical concerns that they need to be aware of, so that we're set for the trip as best we can.
But any of that non-annual or event is set up months and months in advance, they have to submit and have reviews by each building principal, and then administration reviews it before it comes to the board, so. Alright, is there a motion?
Mr. President, move to accept this list with the possible addition of some more sports down the road.
Second.
Alright. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes, and because we have only five of our board members, we've opted to push this closed session to next week, which we will be meeting a week from tonight here, the high school.
Move to adjourn.
At the high school, thank you.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
I can't believe it.
Forty-four minutes.